All right. Welcome to the Jefferson County Commission Meeting. Today is Thursday, February 16, 2023 at 6:00 P. M. Somebody may know, earlier this week, we lost a great guy, Commissioner Kenny Mills. He served proudly 51 years with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. We have Sheriff Tom Hanson, he wants to come up here and say a few words.
Good evening Commissioners and attendees. I was asked to come tonight and make a few remarks. As you can see, Chief Deputy Lucas Star in my car covered by a shroud. In the public safety realm, this is known as a mourning band. Mourning band is worn by police agencies across the world when they lose a member of their agency. This is the second time in as many months that the men and women of my agency have worn these bands. And the second time at the entrance of our office has been draped in black. As you know, in January, we lost Captain Dave Culver. Captain Culver passed far too young in law, and for his loss, he felt for years to come. But that's not my reason for being here tonight. I'm here tonight because I was asked to say a few words about the passing of retired Lieutenant M. Mills, or Kenny, as we knew him. Lieutenant Mills served our great nation as a member of the U. S. Air Force, and then served and protected the citizens of Jefferson County for 57 years, nearly six decades of law enforcement experience. I first met Kenny in 1995, July, when he and one of my predecessors, Sheriff Sencini, interviewed me for a position as Deputy Sheriff. At the time Kenny, holding the rank of Lieutenant, wasn't at the only ranks in the sheriff's office. There was the sheriff, Lieutenant Mills, and the rest were deputies. In those days, every morning before shift, Kenny, some of his lifetime friends and a few select deputies met for coffee at a now-deboned diner in Charlestown, and I was soon honored to be allowed to join that small group. Kenny had a rough exterior, but had a heart of gold, and deep care for his family, especially his grandkids, the citizens of this historic county, and his beloved sheriff's office. Kenny retired as a lieutenant in 2000, but he was not done serving the sheriff's office. Almost immediately, Kenny was rehired as a special deputy, and for 23 years, he worked as a bailiff, traveled all around this county as he knew so well, serving court papers. Kenny was also in-resident historian of the sheriff's office, having firsthand knowledge about the personnel and occurrences during his tenure, but mostly because he knew everyone, good and bad, in the county. I respected Kenny so much that after I became sheriff, I still always greeted him with "Good morning Lieutenant." In closing, I guess what I'm trying to say is Kenny was just a really good guy, a really good man, who out of this mistheoriedly, and I ask you to all, say a prayer for his family, during which I'm agreeing.
Thank you Sheriff. I would ask everybody to stand for the pledge allegiance, and also remain standing for a moment of silence for Kenny Mills.
(Inaudible)
Approval of minutes. If there are no objections for January 31st, 2023, the board meeting, they are approved for meeting on February 2nd, 2023, regular meeting. Are there any objections?
I do.
Yes ma'am.
I noticed under pledge of allegiance it says, "Commissioner Hudson was the pledge of allegiance," and I didn't know he was here that day.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll maybe make that change.
Thank you.
Yes.
I noticed several things. I don't know, it kind of looks like it's a copy and paste error, I don't know, from one meeting to the next, because on the second, third page, there was an amount that we approved, the total on the chart is 452 some thousand, and the amount we approved was 298,000. Things are kind of messed up on several pages.
I'm sorry, where do you see them?
This does not match that.
We can review it. Do you think it needs a total, like a review?
Yeah, because I know we had two staff members, one went on vacation, and the second one went on vacation when the first one returned, and probably, you know, if you're not at the meeting, it's very hard to write.
It sure is.
You have to make go through, re-edit and bring this.
Yeah, and I'll bring in with mine.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get that one. We'll move to February 2nd, 2023, board meeting. If there are no objections, that is approved for the minutes of February 7th, 2023, board meeting. If there are no objections, that is approved. February 9th, 2023, board meeting. If there are no objections, that is approved. Counts, approval accounts payable, February 9th, 2023, in amount $11,046.31. If there are no objections, that is approved. Accounts payable, February 16th, 2023, in amount of $456,124.62. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval manual checks, February 10th, 2023, in amount of $1,655. If there are no objections, that is approved. And remaining checks, February 17th, 2023, in amount of $325,588.83. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval of requisitions, February 16th, 2023, in amount of $40,427.17. If there are no objections, that is approved. And approval payroll, for February 3rd, 2023, in amount of $290,022.42. If there are no objections, that is approved. Do we have any announcements?
We're striking number three.
Number three, okay. Good to hear. All right. All right, we're going to move on to public comment. You have, you will have three minutes when your name is called. Come up and state your name and your address. Just to ask that everybody keeps their comments respectful. Start on with Mark. Mark here.
Nowhere in the Bible does it say, does any deity require prayer. In fact, your own scripture says to keep prayer private. So y'all are countermanding the commandment that says, "Don't put any God above or before Him," and you're disobeying Jesus when he said, "Keep prayer private." So these public comments are a waste of time, as are some presentations or the agenda, on the agenda, and as is the county commission. You are the reason this county is going to have a handbasket. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Jerry Wines. No, you can sit, absolutely.
Please. Well, that's fine.
I'm Jerry Wines. I'm a concerned citizen from Harper's Ferry. Jefferson County is growing each day, residents, tourists, businesses. Our county residents, first responders, and volunteers are being put to risk by our own county commission. Firefighters and EMS personnel are a crucial part of our everyday safety, which are there to help us citizens. We have seven volunteer fire departments, operating with several ambulances, and you, the county commissioners, want only four or five? And you want EMS in four stations rather than the current seven? What about EMS coverage in all seven companies? I pay my ambulance fee, just like other hotels, except I won't have an ambulance in my area. The citizens of Jefferson County are going to suffer at the end. You are causing larger service times and going to risk lives. As a commissioner, you should be looking out for citizens of Jefferson County, not putting our lives at risk. So who voted for this? Why weren't the people of the county not allowed to vote on something big? Our votes mattered for the casino, so why doesn't our votes matter about our local fire departments? I understand volunteers are coming in issue, but what about the ones who already are EMTs? They have the same qualification as a fully person, personal EMS. Why can't they continue to run for our local fire departments? Your new proposal, you're putting one ambulance at Station 1, one at Station 3, two at 4, two at Station 2. Well, you have two and four that are within city limits, few miles of each other. Why can't you take an ambulance from Station 2 and 4 and put at the Blue Ridge Mountain or in Midway, where like Channondale is one of the biggest developments in West Virginia, and our area is growing? Not to mention Company 5 runs a lot of calls every day. With our county growing, if a disaster would happen, and with your proposal, y'all will never be able to handle it. They won't. So what is y'all's backup plan? You, as a county commissioner, needs to focus on the entire county, not just certain parts. So whichever one of you that voted to reduce the EMS services from our stations, you should be ashamed of yourself, because every station in every one of their county matters. A petition was done on Saturday, just in two hours. We got over 2,000 signatures, right here, in our county. Over 2,000, just within two hours, and this ain't all of it, we still have petitions out. People are very upset about the EMT changes. 60% had no clue. So why keep it? You need to keep EMS in the county where they're at. It shouldn't be just on five people's vote, it should be a county vote. And here, would y'all like to have my current petitions that we have? And there's more, and I'll bring more too.
I'm Denise Nick, Harper's Ferry. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. I'm here to ask for Commissioner Stollifer, Commissioner Tabbs, and Commissioner Ath's resignation today. Reason being, in 2022 general election, Claire Ath, you garnered at least a third of the vote from that mountain that got you here, and you voted against us. In 2020, Commissioner Stollifer, you garnered over half of those votes, and you voted against us. You needed the mountain, okay? In 2018, Commissioner Tab, you garnered over half of those votes, and you needed us then. So when you want to go plant your signs, I wouldn't look to the mountain, okay? You voted by making the ESA a county department, you removed our citizen representation, and you disenfranchised over half of these voters, okay, by eliminating their voice and their ambulance service. That said, well, I'm not going to say that. Okay. In less than six months, Commissioner Ath, not seven, as the Journal quoted, you switched your vote because, quote, "You were trying to decide what to do." And I've heard a lot of concerns from county residents, and it's difficult to weed through them, but with seven months in, it's difficult to change, as stated in the Journal. Is this career path just a little too much for you to handle? In my opinion, if you don't know what to do, Claire, you shouldn't be making important decisions affecting the citizens of this county, all because there's too much information to weed through. Basically, your comment says, "I receive many complaints, but I don't care. I'm going to vote the way my puppet master tells me to vote." This type of mentality shows lack of interest in your job, in our community, and our citizens deserve much better. But you voted for your own personal self-interest, for you and your family. You're going to receive an ambulance when you get a call, and Commissioner Stollifer, you and your family are also. And the same with you, Commissioner Tab. You're going to receive an ambulance, but we're not. We have to wait, and why do we have to wait? Why can't you wait? Why can't you put the ambulances on the outskirts, since we've got to come to town to the hospital anyway? Why can't they come and you wait for that ambulance to pick you up? No, nobody thought this plan through before you all decided to vote. You should abstain from voting, or you should have tabled it and said, "Let me research." Okay. Thing I would say is I trust you, Commissioner Stollifer, as much as I trust the 10 dot on radio.
Next. Yeah, good morning.
Last fall, I believe, I requested that a letter be written by this commission and sent to the Public Service Commission of West Virginia, on behalf of thousands of households that all five of you represent regarding the purchase of Jefferson Utilities Incorporated by West Virginia American Water. You have, if you have not done so, then a lot of people are going to wonder why. The people's vote does not give the elected permission to look the other way, just because it doesn't affect them personally or positively. It would behoove this commission now to write a vote of no confidence letter to our West Virginia Legislature to repeal a piece of legislation that changed West Virginia Code 24-2-4G, part of a larger Senate Bill 551 of 2020. A substantial portion of the citizens of this county will be directly and indirectly negatively affected. The bill was presented as a progressive encouragement for utility owners. Consider outlining the negative impacts this poses on your citizens, as this change to code conveniently permits unbridled negotiations between utilities to maximize profits for one utility owner and obligate monumental rate increases on the monopolized customers of the other utility owner. Also consider exposing questionable practice of potentially forcing trapped customers to pay for the same infrastructure multiple times, and twice booking rate-based supported asset value to the purchasing utility and profit for the seller. Another potential concern of this commission may be this year's Senate Bill 245, which simply enforces the travesties of SB 551 by transferring authority back to the lobbied legislature on the executive branch matters, and disengages government checks and balances our forefathers once thought was a good idea. Again, it does seem to highly benefit those who lobby for it. I did not elect lobbyists. I thought I elected citizens who understood our God-given right under essential public health to affordable, potable water and sanitation, no matter what tax bracket we fall under. In my opinion, these types of ideologies do not promote capitalism, they promote privatized socialism, essentially handing neutered Local Powers Act authority to Wall Street interests. So, to paraphrase William Wilberforce, at this juncture, this commission can't unknow stop. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Stoppes from Harper's Ferry. I'm here for several people, several questions. The first one, the people of Jefferson County are here, they want us to save our EMS like it is. First of all, someone said, "Why should the fate of Jefferson County's EMS be in the hands of just three people?" Why didn't, wasn't there a voting day for the residents of Jefferson County to decide for themselves if they wanted this done or not? Do y'all have a backup plan if this fails? Okay, that's another question he has. On the petition, I spoke to several people that day, combined cars. They had no clue, elders and two young people. They're like, "What is this?" I'm like, "We'll decide what's at your overtake, try explaining to you." We are here to save our EMS like it is. So being said, wake up, guys. Help save Jefferson County like it is. Don't throw us in a train wreck. We are here as all, we are all one Jefferson County people, but we want, if this doesn't go the way we want, we are going to keep pushing until it is saved, because this is so wrong. We, the people, want this for ourselves and our county. We have to look out for the fate of Jefferson County, the growth, the school, our law enforcement, and our EMS. Okay, if we don't have the EMS and law enforcement, stop the growing of Jefferson County, we don't have room for it. As some government officials would say, "Let's keep America great." Okay, as our citizens of Jefferson County say, "We're going to make Jefferson County great." So save the EMS like it was. Thank you.
Kristy Grove.
Hi, my name is Kristy Grove. I am a lifetime resident of Harper's Ferry. I am coming this evening to talk about the EMS here that's happening in Jefferson County, and also what's going to affect the mountain, the mountain people. I just want to talk about the mountain people. So those of us on the mountain are going to lose all of our volunteer EMS staffing. And with that being said, have anybody put into account what's going to happen on the half of the mountain that I live on, which means I'm going to have to get EMS service coming from Harper's Ferry? With that being said, in the summer months, when there's traffic jams, or when Jefferson County is going to be doing the construction on 340 where the rock slides are, I know when I tried to go down the quote-unquote "big hill," Chestnut Hill Road, in the summer months, you can't get down there because of tourism, traffic jams. So I want to know, is there a plan in effect for that? Because there's going to be traffic, or EMS coming from the other end of the mountain, Charlestown, trying to get up to the mountain to where we live on our half, and that means longer wait times. I literally live three minutes from my fire station, which means now I'm going to have to wait eight to 20 minutes to get EMS to my house. So those are a few of my concerns. I do foresee this being a disaster with us having our stations up there. Are you guys staffed? Are you guys ready for this to take effect come March 1? That's a good question. Is the county ready to take on this huge responsibility? That's my question. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Ed Hanon, Charlestown, y'all, no name. A little confused about an agenda item on tonight's agenda here, and that's the request for the interim county administrator and the new finance director to give an update on the key deliverables. A few weeks ago, you had the director of ESA here, and where were the questions, accountability, and transparency at that time? And it's the same guy that was here that said back in August, they were 90% complete on these deliverables. Yet you're asking these people who are new to the game to give you an update? I feel like you might be setting them up for failure, or I don't know what y'all are doing, but it doesn't seem, it lacks some transparency. And you can't be surprised by this, by where you are here today, because over the last couple of years, several presentations have been done here, in front of the ESA Board, and in front of the volunteers, with quantifiable statistical data raising red flags on the path you're taking and the concerns for service delivery. They all fell on deaf ears, and this probably will too. What I'm saying is, you guys knew this was coming, you're here at the 11th hour, and you're asking people who are just new to the game to give you an update? We should be able to do better than this. And you know the old saying, well, it applies here. I wish you all the best of luck, and I wish the citizens good health.
I don't volunteer anymore. I get paid. I'm making more money than I ever am. I appreciate y'all doing what you do. It appears that not all Jefferson County volunteer fire companies are 100% on board with the county's taking action on the emergency services without a referendum voted on by the public to resolve the volunteer fire companies as the community has been accustomed With that said, good luck with all of that. It's hard to be safe with the current county commission. With the rest of my three minutes that I have left, I will take a moment of silence to honor all volunteers. Given their time, they're like, in your service. They make this community a safer place.
You didn't take three minutes? It's not long, did you? Austin Dotson.
My name is Austin Dotson. I live up in Channondale. I'm here about the EMS, and I am fairly ignorant about what's going on. On Saturday of previous week, there were folks asking for a signature, and I had somewhere that I needed to be, so I didn't have time to learn what their petition is about. On Monday, I went to, I saw a post on Facebook related to this EMS, and went to a meeting to learn about it, and now I'm here. There's goods and positives to just about everything that anybody can do. There may be merits to centralizing, well, there are merits to centralizing EMS authority, but as far as what the county has put out, there's that piece of paper that was on the website that the county commissioner had that was an EMS update, and it said that, "Hey, you had a day shift and a night shift crew of an ambulance? Now you're not." And I just want ambulance up near my house, I got a fair amount of family that live up there, most people I care about live up there, so I just want ambulance up there. If you guys need to centralize it, centralize it. I'm not a huge fan of losing all the volunteers, I'd like it if they could be the first people to be offered the jobs for these new full-time positions, if at all possible, but I just want ambulance up there. My sister and kids live up there. I live up there, my mom's up there, my dad's up there. That's all.
Hello, my name is Amanda Strad, and I've lived here for 23 years, and I'm here as a resident of Jefferson County, not as a city council member. Okay, there we go. I am not here to debate public prayer, but if you're going to do it, do it with an open heart and mind. We live right outside the DC metro area, so I'm acting, hearing prayers from those outside the Judeo-Christian faith would not be a problem. Besides, a Wicca, Sikh, humanist, Cherokee, or Hindu prayer would be interesting. However, I have a feeling that might not sit well with some who would only want prayers of certain faith espousing certain doctrines. So I have a suggestion. Ask for volunteers from the local clergy to read the following prayer before each public Ask for volunteers from the local clergy to read the following prayer before each public meeting, as I think it really fits the occasion. It's from Senate Chaplain Barry C. Black, and I'm only going to switch out signatures for commissioners. And I've never read a prayer in public before, so excuse me. Eternal Spirit, the foundation of light and truth, we rise and stand because of your mercies. And for some reason, I don't know, I'm crying. Okay. You make our plans succeed. Today, shine the light of your presence upon our commissioners. As they wrestle with complexity, show them the way. Lord, give them the wisdom you had promised to all who would simply request it. Remind them of your mission to bring deliverance to captives and liberty to the bruised. Make our lawmakers focus on pleasing you and not on political consequences. Give them contrite and humble spirits. Teach them new and creative ways to cooperate with each other for the common good. We pray in your merciful name. Amen. Thank you.
Yeah. Name is Chief Ralph Evermore, Jefferson Fire Department. I'd like to present this photograph tonight to Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner F., Commissioner Stoffer, and Commissioner Tab, and former Commissioner Hudson, but she's not here, but also I'd like to Mr. Prowse look at his copy. I want to reiterate that Commissioner Prowse has nothing to do with his public comments for me, that she was not here, the one who told you that, the Senate judge. To explain that the, this is one of our members removing a dedication plaque from the ambulance that was sold to the county because of this ridiculous hostile EMS takeover from volunteers. The plaque that is being removed, as engraved on it, "Ambulance 3, dedicated July 16th in recognition of the Shepherdstown Homemakers Club for support in the establishment of the Shepherdstown Fire Department EMS Division." In 1961, the Homemakers Club was a group of women that came to the leadership of the fire department, asking about how the volunteers could provide, should provide some type of ambulance service. It was agreed that with the help of the Homemakers Club fundraiser activities, they were able to raise money to purchase the ambulance for the Shepherdstown Fire Department, as long as the volunteers were going to train with the proper training that was required at that time. The department completed that training for numerous members, and to this day is still continuing to train with much more advanced training. You see several members of our department were the very first West Virginia certified car-can EMTs within the state, with the car number 001 being issued in my collar, D. Lee Morris. Later on, when paramedics became a reality, our department had, was in the second class of the state of West Virginia, the first one being in Huntington, the second one being here in Berkeley and Jefferson County. And numerous members became paramedics within the state, with one that's still sitting back here, which is our picture. So to see this EMS service of the past 62 years go down the drain because of U4 is not only heartbreaking, but it's sickening, all because of U4 thinking you know how to do more efficiently. For the past 62 years, the EMS service was provided by volunteers. Had 15 of those 62 years, we were supplemented with career EMS paramedics firefighting, creating a well-working combined system through the first, the J.C.S.A., and the J.C.S.A. in the day, who knows what they are. This combined system has been extremely successful, mainly because politicians such as yourselves skipped a nut out of it. When was the last time anyone heard a politician say about any program that really can make us more efficient and better? Never. Because anytime you let any level of government, whether it's federal, state, county, or local, are you paying attention, Mr. Stoffer? You don't get them involved, they would totally screw it up, and this is exactly how this EMS transition is going. And you're all that, it's all about efficiency and profit, not one word of safety or what's best for the community. My purpose of this little presentation tonight was mainly to put some shame on you four commissioners, but I don't think that's going to happen, because in order for you to feel ashamed, you first must have a conscience. Last year, this whole ridiculous idea came into play, I stayed in this very room during public comment, that you all have no idea how much impact and all the cripplity and effects it will cause, but we are starting to see him balloon now. So in 12 days, we would just see how efficient your new EMS system is. All I can say in closing is that I hope the good Lord, the Father, all citizens of Jefferson County, to know your new system won't fail and misbehave. No, I'm happy to thank you.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me? Great. Thank you. I'd like to start on a positive note this evening. I just want to say that I really love Jefferson County, and that many people appreciate the quality of life here. Lots of times, many of us will come before you when you have decisions to make, and we discuss our displeasure with some of those, because we do have such an appreciation for the good quality of life that we currently do have here. There was, tonight, I just want to give my public comment on something that I'm disheartened by, the presentation in the packet by the HEPMO for the EPTA Multimodal Transit Center project. I recall a time not too long ago when agreements were signed and supported by the HEPMO, the EPTA, the City of Ranson, the West Virginia DOT State Rail Authority, and the Maryland Transit Administration to locate a multimodal transportation station in Jefferson County on the Jefferson Orchards property. This was named Northport Station, such as the road Northport that leads to Rockwell. This project for Jefferson County seems to have been abandoned with the development of the Rockwell factory and their occupation of 200 acres of Jefferson Orchards. Several years ago, the EPTA and the City of Ranson entered into a memorandum of understanding for the implementation of Northport Station, and that, as I said, was the project to establish our own multimodal transportation station. Tonight's request is asking you to endorse one for Martinsburg. There also was a time when the City of Ranson received funds for a study that included a transportation center in our own community that was to be in downtown Charlestown at the Charles Washington Hall. So I'm asking tonight, why are we not considering the submission of Jefferson County's own request for a transportation station to provide better services in our own community, instead of sending a letter to the government asking for funds for Martinsburg to have one in Berkeley County? I think this is a disservice to the community of Jefferson County, and I hope that you reconsider. Thank you.
So I'm here to introduce, I was here a few months ago, and you guys listened to me about one of your state representatives to help Charlestown with their federal grant for the intersection. We're still working with them on that, but I wanted to actually offer Jefferson County my company services in helping with looking for federal grants for emergency services, not only for infrastructure, but for social services as well. We just signed up with Raleigh County last week, and it's not just infrastructure help that they're asking for. For instance, we actually did a lot of research when talking to my team about how we can help you guys out. But, for example, Homeland Security has a federal grant for providing counties and municipalities federal funding for EMS and firefighting, trading along with staffing. And that's actually due on March 17th. So that's something that my team can help out with, if those comments are there. But beyond that, social services, infrastructure help, whatever improves the economy, and the security and safety for Jefferson County. So I'll just give you a few examples of what we're doing with Raleigh County, so you have an idea of what are some of the programs out there. So Raleigh County is near with Beckley County, or Beckley City. What we're actually helping them out with on a broader scale is actually building a sports, what do you call it, a sports building to bring in, to bring in economic hub, because they are the largest county in that area, so it draws in from other counties. But beyond that, another thing we're doing, along with improving their roads, is we're renovating a former hospital for them to help women who are either pregnant or have children or are single in learning IT skills. That's another social program that we're helping them out with, because there are so many federal grants out there to help, there's just not enough people writing them. So my ask today is to offer my services to see if I can help out Jefferson County, and offer and donate my services from my grants writing team, to see how we can win federal bids for you guys.
All right. Oh, that's a very generous offer, and you say you're doing business with other counties? Do you have a contract or a request or proposal?
We do.
How do I, should I send to the? Well, we would have to make it a published offer, because there might be other businesses that are interested also. So I think that's a decision that we would have to work on ourselves.
Absolutely.
And then post it, and then anybody could apply.
Apply for?
Well, or submit a proposal, and we would review all the proposals, and then decide if we were going to.
Offer?
Or work one.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing. If you have a contract, if we could send, I get a copy of it, send it to our legal counsel to review, if you have a very similar contract you have with Raleigh.
Absolutely.
We could send it to Cindy, to Nathan, to our county minister, we can review that, and certainly I'm interested in learning more and trying to capture some of these federal grants. I know there's a lot of federal money out there for maybe the programs you mentioned.
Very much.
Yeah.
Well, and one thing I would say, I know we have discussed having the transportation summit coming up. I think once we have that summit, I think working with JHS Group, putting out to them, I do think we're going to need to look at what Jefferson County can do to improve our infrastructure and roads, because I feel like we just keep going in circles, and we're not getting money, we're not getting solutions for.
And to your point on infrastructure, I mean, really, Department of Transportation, which is a state agency, is responsible for our roads, the county is not in the business of doing roads. So I would like to understand more how your group can work with the county and be beneficial to the county, and the same as Commissioner Tab just stated, is explore options with other groups to go after some of these funds as well. So I'm just trying to understand how your group can fit and benefit into what actually our responsibilities are here in the county that's not really, that is maybe the responsibility of the state versus the county.
Absolutely, and I'm so glad you asked that question, because, so I'm a small woman-owned, minority-owned construction business, actually I'm located in Berkeley, but we're on Middle Lake Pike. You guys pass this, we're right across from King's Pizza. So what makes it different, and that's why I was a little bit confused about your question, is because not only am I a construction company for the federal government, along with commercial companies, I just opened up my own grants department six months ago, and that department is, it's a brain hub of individuals who only know how to write our federal grants. So what, I've done a lot of research on West Virginia, a lot of grant writers within the counties only know how to apply for state bids or state grants, thus both the senators or the congressmen. But there's a lot of money out there, but more importantly, there's a lot of need in West Virginia, whether it's emergency services or not beyond the infrastructure part, that's just a small part that we handle. I'm more focused on the social development of counties. So example, the, helping the women with IT skills or giving them a scholarship to learn IT for six months, that's one of our biggest projects that we're helping them out with. Renovating a former medical clinic, that's something that it can be bid out for, but my company does something very unique. Not only do, we are a daily construction company, but I have the bandwidth and the brain power to offer great writing services. So what we're doing with a lot of other counties is, we work with them, we're getting a wish list, not only for infrastructure, but everything else. How can they build a better economic hub? How can they bring money back into the county? How can they make it safer? How can the sheriff's office or your emergency response unit within this county ask for more funds to get equipment, to get training? That's what my team can offer. What's the next step?
You may have any further questions? I think we'll have Jeanette and Nathan.
I've got my card.
And yes.
Well, I would like to see it too, so if you could send it to all the commissioners.
Yes.
That your proposal.
Absolutely.
Or your contract, whatever you're planning to do, and tell the commissioners and Cindy and.
You could just reach out to me, and I can provide you an email address. Fantastic. Thank you very much for your time and having me.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jack Chu.
You and the commissioners? I'm here today to get your approval to hire Christine Houda for our appropriate office. Lynn Fields gave me her resignation a few weeks ago, so I need to fill her position. And Christine, Chrissy comes from the tax office. It is budget neutral, and I did contact the sheriff, and he was aware of it before I offered her the job. So we're going to start her off at 3:05, starting February 27.
I'll move to approve the hire, Christine Houda. Starting date is February 7.3, salary is $35,000. Any discussion? All favors. Next, we have Steve Allen.
It'll be a tactic.
There you go.
Awesome. If you want to go.
Absolutely. Okay. Commissioners, as you're aware, over the last, well, since 2019, we've received a Homeland Security Grant to provide bovine emergency response plan, training to our first responders within Jefferson County and throughout the region, actually not just Jefferson County, but Berkeley County and other areas. And not only first responders, we had, let's see, veterinarians involved, we had farm, local farmers involved in the training, and we have put together a very fine group, a mixture of first responders, farmers, and let's say first responders, fire, EMS, law enforcement, farmers, veterinarians, animal control as well. And we've come up with a template emergency response plan for responding to not only cattle, bovine, although BURB stands for Bovine Emergency Response Program, but for horses, or sheep, pigs, hogs, just about any small animal as well. And of course, along with that grant, we pay for the training, as well as the purchase of a trailer, and some panels, cattle panels. However, there's some small items that also need to be purchased, that we didn't have the money at that time to purchase from the grant. And we're before you tonight to ask for your permission to complete the equipping of that trailer with what you see in front of you, which has a list of items from Tractor Supply and some items from Fastenal, as well as, one of the other things that came up was, the trailer isn't marked, doesn't have any lettering on it or anything like that. It is titled and tagged, but it doesn't have any markings on it to denote what it's for and where it's from. So we would like to have your permission to utilize some of our funds, our, I believe it's line item 341, for supplies and materials that we could utilize to purchase that. And on the agenda, we were asking for around $1,500, and that takes care of the equipment and the decals and lettering. And that takes care of the equipment and the decals and lettering. Although, as you can see on the line of the list, it's $1,192.96. So we can adjust that around. If we can limit it to $1,500, that would be great. If anything else comes up, to have that amount of materials available. If not, we're certainly happy with, with you approving that we would be able to use $1,192.96 to, to purchase this equipment.
And just to clarify, this is an additional equipment or additional funds? It's what's already in our budget?
That's what I was just gonna.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, line item 341 still has.
So it's just transferring from one.
Well, we're not transferring anymore. I'm not even sure. Chris is here. She'd be able to tell us whether if you can purchase it from supplies and materials or where it has to come from. But however, that needs to be done if we can do that.
I would say rope holders is necessary purchase. You've only got to sit down there. I don't know if that's enough.
Well, and.
You can start with.
Yeah, the list actually came from, whenever we had the training back in March of last year, out of that training, it was like, okay, how do we proceed forward? There were several people that were in the, that had an interest in progressing the trailer. So out of that, as Director Allen had mentioned, we had several people volunteer to come up and say, you know, and like I said, it's a list of farmers. We also had a list of veterinarians and, you know, law enforcement. So all those people in that committee. And this is over a process of about eight months of meeting to determine this is what we need to, you know, and like I said, it's just the start.
All right.
And, oh, I know, but I'm just saying that this is just the start. Because unfortunately, it's just like anything else, you only have a limited amount of funds. So, and we've been very fortunate especially, and that was one thing I didn't realize, that we actually had in the 911 list, over 300 people with an own livestock in Jefferson County. I was. But I knew there was a good penny. I just didn't realize there were more than 300, around 300. But like I said, we've gotten a lot of donations from Howard Taff, as you know. And he's been very beneficial as far as getting resources. So the comprehensive list of resources we have is phenomenal with this plan. So, and our next step for the BURB plan, which we're not, you know, I guess we're gonna mention it since I already brought it up, is just going for the Fire and Emergency Association and law enforcement just get their buy-in as well. So, and like I said, we have representation from the organization anyway. Hopefully it's, you know, not gonna be too big of a deal to keep moving forward.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase of the equipment and trailer markings for the bovine emergency response program up to the $1,500 requested.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most curious answer.
And Miami's agenda, are we taking care of, does the trailer have flashing lights on it? So when you're parked by the side of 81? Don't get rear-ended.
We'll definitely, we'll have the lights on. We'll have to have four-way flashes. I don't know about emergency lights on.
Well, something.
But those are, those are a part of it. And one of the things, to come back to that, as far as, it doesn't necessarily have to have emergency lights because we're gonna have first responders there anyway. And they're gonna be, just like anything else, they're gonna barricade that incident. So hopefully nobody runs into you with it. So, but there again, a lot of first responders get hit whenever there's accidents on the interstate, so. Thank you.
Ready, our, our second item is the release of the request for proposal for our hazard mitigation plan. If you recall, in January of last year, we applied for the grant to be able to fund a contractor to do the plan. Well, finally, in late, late last, last year, the federal government finally approved it. So we wanna move to the next step, which is to put out a request for proposal. And then at, and I believe it'll be the April meeting, if we look at my, my timeline. In the April meeting, April 6th, the, we would have the RFPs in. And then we would open them in the county commission meeting and then for the, for the proposals and then go from there to have it approved, or selected, I'm sorry, selected on April 6th. And we'll be bringing that to you. But we'd like to have your permission to publish the request for proposal for that. Nathan, I, I sent it down to Nathan for his review to make sure all the i's were taught and the t's were crossed for the RFP.
I'll make the motion to approve for Director Allen to post the request for proposal for the 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
And it will be, it will mean a lot of meetings of the hazard mitigation, hazard mitigation group to develop the plan to go over all these things. Last but not least, just to, to let you know, Dicky has updated our animals and disaster plan, which I believe the original one came out in around 2005. I believe this plan was actually written around 2011. The update on it, there's nothing that's changed in there other than the resources. He's made contact with all the counties, include all the counties in our region, all other, the five other counties plus Pendleton County, and they're now included in this plan. We're, we have it now and we're waiting on all the other counties to get together and then we can start putting it into, not service, but at least have it all the data updated. There doesn't need to be any signatory acceptance or anything like that because it's still the same as the old one.
The only signature that would require from the president is just that you receive copy.
Other than that? Thank you all very much. Thank you. All right, next, we'll move to item number six.
Good evening. I appear to request appointment of a public safety dispatcher, public safety dispatcher trainee, very experienced dispatchers presented to us. And we would like to bring her on board. This is a fast-track person. We're gonna do about a little over a month's training and then get her deployed to the floor while we have a number of other candidates that I'm gonna bring to you in March. So we want to be able to deploy this person, get them out on the floor, and I'll start their training. Candidate is Patricia Settle, 15 years at Loudoun County, 15 years in Montgomery County. She has passed all the process. They were all positive and recommended for hire. We've offered salary of 25, 62.50 an hour, which is 53,300, top end of our, our salary range for, for dispatchers coming on board Jefferson.
Okay, I'll move to, and of course, I know the answer already, but is this budget due?
It's in, yeah, I figured. I'll move to approve the appointment to Patricia Settle as public safety dispatcher, trainee, an hour range of 25, 62.50 an hour. We signed the notice in 2000 and opposed trading salary increase once full-time training is completed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most curious answer.
Thank you.
Can I just thank you real quick? How many positions do you still have open?
We will have, after this one, there's still seven.
And how many applicants do you have that you?
We had, at one point, there were over 100.
Okay.
We tested upwards around 50 to 60. And we only got four out of this. We're working, we're trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're gonna move on to Jennifer Meyer, Director of Jefferson County Parks and Recreation. Go ahead, Jennifer. I see you. Can you hear us?
I can. Thank you, guys. So thank you, guys, for your time tonight. I appreciate it. Just wanted tonight to come and discuss the annual fireworks event that has been held at San Michael's Park in the past. As you may know, Jefferson County Parks and Rec exists to provide public spaces and recreation opportunities for all people to gather, celebrate, contemplate, and engage in activities that promote health, well-being, community, and the environment. Our mission is to take a leadership role in harnessing resources for the purpose of planning and developing these, these activities for our community. As part of our mission, we have offered over 25-plus community events each year. From Santa to egg hunts and music in the park, our staff works hard to provide fun, family-friendly activities for everyone in our community to enjoy. When the COVID-19 pandemic forced everyone to shut down in early 2020, many of these events were canceled. One such event was the annual Independence Day celebration with fireworks that has been held at San Michael's Park for over 15 years. On average, the fireworks event cost about 300, about $30,000 and had an attendance of about 8,000 people each year. As we continue to expand offerings and rebuild programming and events in a post-pandemic environment, we have heard from our community loud and clear that they want fireworks to return to the park. In years past, the event has been supported by the county, municipalities, private donations, businesses, and the Jefferson County Parks and Recreation Commission. Looking ahead, if we bring the Independence Day celebration and the fireworks back to San Michael's Park in 2023, we are again, again, need to harness this community support to make it happen. I'm here tonight to ask that the Jefferson County Commission consider supporting the fireworks event by pledging $10,000 to get the event back up and running this year. In addition to our requests, we are going, making similar requests to other municipalities as well as businesses in our community to help fund this event. And I believe, I'm, I'm not sure how to share my screen on here, but I, we did have a kind of a short presentation that we had given out at the mayor's meeting that I sent over earlier today. Just kind of an overview is the event with estimated cost and what we've done in the past.
Is anybody to make questions for you?
Yeah, I do. Jennifer, do we know what the municipalities are considering for the event?
We have not officially gotten those numbers. We are on several, I know we have already put in a grant, mini-grant application for the city of Ranson. I believe they are in support of our request, but we have not heard officially from them what that amount will be. And we are also on, coming up, I believe we're going to Bolivar the first week of March, and we are getting on an agenda for the city of Charleston as well. So you're kind of our first official stop.
And then I have one more. We solicited from private companies yet? Do we have, we asked for any donations from any of the local businesses or companies to help support a community event?
We, we have not yet. We found it harder and harder since the pandemic to get the business support that we've had, you know, kind of pre-pandemic. And I think some of that is, we have a lot of sponsors that are committed to a lot of different events that we do, like our movie sponsors, you know, we're this year, I think, doing six movie in the parks because we have the sponsorships for those. So we have a lot of people coming on board to do, you know, a lot of great community events, but it's the smaller amount. So it's getting those, kind of those big numbers from businesses to, to make an event like this possible. And as you can imagine, costs have gone up. So the fireworks themselves in the past were about 18,000 and this year we're looking at about 22.5. So, you know, with everything going up in costs, it's just a little, seems to be a little bit harder getting those, those big funders.
I, I would like to see if we can help support this event. Don't have clue where the money could come from. I was gonna throw that ball, if you all agree, in the finance directors.
If you wanna give back to us on that, you're gonna put you on the spot tonight.
Right.
Jennifer, what kind of timeline are you up against for commitment on this? Because I would like to have some more information on what we're getting from the municipalities and really what the county needs to commit to, and then obviously where that could come from.
Sure.
Timeline for that, I guess, is what I'm asking. Take all this until.
No problem.
Next meeting.
So in an ideal world, the fireworks contract would need to be signed in early March. Kind of March 15th is our last final date that we need to let them know in order to get the shells. So this, the show that, that's the 22,500 show is a 20-minute show and they use the larger shells, so they're 10-inch, eight and 10-inch mortars. So getting that, they're telling me that getting those shells will be difficult the longer we go to try this out. So I said, March 15th is kind of the absolute last point, and that is our next board meeting as well. So my board will make a kind of a final decision, knowing where we are with funding at that point.
And our, our next commission meeting is March 2nd. So I guess that's just why I'm asking. We have time to gather information. And if we, if you're fine, if we could table that for March 2nd.
Like, would she need, would you need the funds in this fiscal year or could we push it to FY '24 budget request?
So the event will be held July 1st. You know, I do know there is discussion including it in the, the budget request. So I guess that's up to you guys, how you would do it. We would have to put a deposit down, which I, I don't want to speak out of turn on behalf of my board. And I know I have maybe a couple of board members there, but I believe that we are able to do that deposit to get the contract signed.
Is, is there any objections to table this until our next meeting to get more information? One, information is where the money would come from. I think two, was some request that Commissioner Jackson brought up about the municipalities as well too.
Right, and businesses.
And businesses, yes.
Well, it'd be helpful. And I'm, I'm hopeful too, we will have some good news from my finance department but that I think if we lead by example, some of the other governmental entities will be, will want.
I think that's good. All right. All right, what, what we'll do, we'll table this until next meeting and we'll get back to you. You can maybe take yourself available for questions at our next meeting. We'll put it back on our agenda. So good, Jennifer?
That sounds great. Thank you, guys, very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're just gonna move on to item number eight. Matt Monax, Director of Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Howdy, good evening, commissioners. How y'all doing? Pat Monax with Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle, here tonight seeking a letter of request from the commission for the EPTA, or sorry, the Eastern Panhandle Multimodal Transit Center project for the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority. I'm also joined by Elaine Bartelson, who is the director of EPTA, in case super hard questions come. But essentially, we are applying for a little over $10 million grant through the RACE program, through USDOT, which is an acronym for rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. It is one of the few major discretionary transportation grants that's part of the new IIJA, the Investment in Infrastructure and Jobs Act at federal level that requires, if you meet certain criteria, no local match or no non-federal, I should say. So we qualify, we check all the boxes, and we are able to submit for 100% federal share on this project. As part of the packet, what you see is there was a presentation at the 60% design level of this project that was presented by our consultants, Michael Baker, to EPTA's Board of Directors. This is going to, this facility has four major components. So it has a new maintenance facility and bus storage. It has a transfer center that has six bus bays, has a fuel station under canopy, and it has a new administrative building. This project will be able to greatly enhance the operations and services that EPTA offers. It will put it in downtown Martinsburg rather than kind of out on, on Novak Drive. If you've driven out to the airport, it's south of the airport is where it is right now. You can't really, it's kind of tough to walk or bike there. That's what you want to. And it's even harder to find a parking space.
Yes.
So, which again underscores the purpose. And so, yeah, so that is, that's where we're at, the 60%. So we have received letters of support from Jefferson County Chamber, City of Ranson, Corporation of Shepherdstown, and the town of Bolivar. We continue to try to get as many letters of support we can, and that's what brings me here before you all this evening. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. This, this would only cost the staff time to edit in a couple of lines and then, you know, scan it, print it, and to me, and whatever the cost of ink is, that's it. That's all we need from the commission this evening, so.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, this is just a letter of support and there's no financial commitment.
That is absolutely correct.
Well, this new transit center is very exciting to me. You know, I know. you know, I know a, a previous citizen said, you know, why don't we get something in Charlestown? Well, and I can understand that thought, but, you know, where it's located, the customers can absolutely walk. You know, it's not just one bus stop on the sidewalk. They can, there's a place they can wait and, um, the buses, everything's there and it will update the facilities and there's even room in the, um, building for electric vehicles. That's kind of the possibility in the future. So it's very exciting.
Yep, so we'll have, um, four, four EV parking spaces at the facility and it is going to be designed and wired for eight, uh, to charge up at once eight electric buses. And actually, EPTA just received, uh, in conjunction with Park Street Natural Historical Park, uh, Federal Lands Access Program Grant, and they're going to be getting the first two electric buses that will be part of EPTA's fleet. Although, the man's pretty high right now. I don't want to say when it's going to come in town, but, uh, it, it's on its way.
Yeah. So it, it's, it's really exciting, the new possibilities and, you know, but people think of it as just the bus service, but it's the on-demand medical transport that is really, really serves our community. You may not see it yourself, but, um, they take a lot of folks to the VA, to Martinsburg, to the, the hospital for different things. So, um, people that have no transportation at all, they pick them up at their house. Wheelchair accessible and on and off. So it's great, great service.
You don't mean to say in an emergency test?
No, no, no. When they have doctor's appointments and they have no way to, or they have to get tests.
Non, non, or non-emergency medical transport.
Right, right. I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Everything feels like an emergency to me these days.
Here, I'm going to move to approve the letter of support, uh, for the grant funding for the Eastern Panhandle Multimodal Transit Center project.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries, Mr. Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Can you sign the letter? You have the letter.
Yes, I'll sign it now.
Yeah, hey, that'd be fast.
Can you take it with you? Yeah, she, she, she did that very quick.
That's like what, what happens to the shirts of the Super Bowl team that loses. What are they saying?
We, we hit another for that one.
Rejection letter. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, next we have, uh, agenda number six, Lutman Land Development.
Number nine.
Uh, number, all right, number nine, sorry. Number nine. That says seven.
You said six.
Six, okay. I need better glasses. I need a mask, check. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, commission members, staff, council. I'm Paul Rocco, I'm a local land use consultant. I have this item and the next item. I'm here, uh, on behalf on this item for Lutman Land Development LLC. It's a piece of property. Tonight is just merely a request that you accept the decision and send it over to the planning commission for their consistency declarations and comprehensive plan. And then it comes back for a hearing by this board. The hearing needs to take place within sixty days of today. Since I'm presenting it, uh, I do offer in the agenda, the date, the first available date is March sixteenth, uh, uh, meeting of the county commission. If you're having a fifth meeting or fifth Thursday meeting, the thirtieth would be also an alternate date for you as well as the sixth, uh, April.
Mr. Rock, is that, when is the next planning commission meeting?
It will fit, it will fit the next planning commission meeting, which is the, uh, second Tuesday.
Okay. Um, any questions? Uh, I was going to move the, to accept land interpretation request for map amendment for Lutman Land Development LLC parcel two and six on map twenty-nine, U. T. Tax District, and schedule public hearing at the county commission meeting on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and to refer the application to the planning commission for advice on the request consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Stalberg. Uh, the next one I have is for the Federal Group Inc., uh, commonly known as the Clarion outside Shepherdstown on Little Drive. Uh, likewise, same holds true. Uh, it needs to be referred to the planning commission for consistency declaration in a public hearing within sixty days by this commission, which needs to be advertised. So you just, you just need to let the staff over there know about advertising back to the county commission public hearing. Same dates are available, March sixteenth, work since you made that one to the others.
Okay, any questions? All right, I'll, I'll move to accept the land interpretation request for map amendment, federal route incorporated parcel ten point nine and twenty-two point three on map eight, Shepherdstown Tax District, and schedule public hearing at the county commission meeting on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and to refer the application to the planning commission for advice on the request consistency with the conference plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, Nathan, I'm going to move to your agenda items. Is there anything that we can discuss in open session?
Commissioner, so for the, um, there are ongoing, um, discussions, I, I, it would be safe to say regarding the leases of ambulance space. Uh, a couple of the documents are signed. Uh, there is an issue regarding a contract negotiation on that particular, on the one particular, uh, company. And, uh, because it is an issue of contract negotiation, uh, I believe that you should probably deal with that in executive session to determine what your position, um, would be on the issue of contract. Um, I would also, I do not know, uh, the complete status of, of number thirteen, but if that's a contract negotiation as well, then for the same reasons, uh, you may have to deal with that at least initially in.
Okay. Um, I'll move that we go into executive session to receive legal rights for contractual matters under eleven D and, uh, agenda number thirteen.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are in executive, we're going to executive session.
All right, I move that we come out of executive session. Do you have a second? I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now at executive session. Is there any motions as we return from executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion regarding item number 13 to direct Nathan Cochrane to write a letter in response to Shepherd regarding Shepherd University's emergency action plan.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to move on to finance director's report.
So, we just wanted to get the process started of talking about budget revisions. And really, this policy was drafted to address the uniform regulations that are published by the West Virginia State Auditor, which states that revisions must be made prior to the obligation expenditure of funds and with the prior written approval of the state auditor, West Virginia Code 11826N. So, the second reason this policy was drafted is to support financial purchasing policy 305, which is already in existence, and is to provide additional clarification and guidance to elected officials and department heads so the process to revise the budget is clear. The third reason is to increase transparency to the commission before funds are obligated. And I was talking a little, a little bit from folks about this, and I think that this policy is a good start, but that I may need to add some procedures in here that clarify a state revision versus what would be an internal budget revision. So, I do think it needs a little bit more work, but I did want to just kind of get it in front of you and get the process started and get your feedback on what your thoughts were on it, so we can have like a, you know, a collaborative approach to developing it so we can get the opportunity to take it from the ground up.
Does anybody have any suggestions or questions?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if it's possible that you could send the Word version or an edible version to the commission.
Oh, yeah, sure.
In case we have suggestions that we could document and track and maybe send back to you. And that was, I thank you for clarifying, because that was one of my questions, was the process for internal revisions being included in here to be consistent with purchase of the policy 305.
Absolutely, yep. I'll send you a Word version out, so you can mark it up however you see fit, and then I can take all the input and work with my magic and come up with a policy that everybody's happy with.
And can I just ask that we include the county clerk in the?
Yeah, of course.
The version, so we can get her input from her department and their contributions.
Yes, absolutely.
It really, it just helped clarify. It's addressed a little bit in 305, but not enough, right? We thought it really needed a standalone, just because there are always so many questions about it, so now people have better direction.
All right, does anybody have any further questions or directions?
And I'll add some content too, in terms of like the state versus internal budget.
Thank you.
And just make it really clear, like two separate sections, and then.
Did we put through the revised version 305?
It's on our site.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we're going to move to item number 12, final review potential adoption of county commissioners' proposed prayer policy. I'll turn that over to Commissioner.
Thank you. So, I made some changes after the last meeting to reflect the concerns that Commissioners Jackson and Abbott had. And the two things that I changed. First, had to do with, it was paragraph two. I don't, I'm sorry, I did not bring copies this evening. It was the same policy as last meeting. Paragraph two would stay the opening prayer shall be given by clergy member who resides within, who has a congregation within the Jefferson County borders, and that would be referred to as local clergy. That's the same. The commission will make reasonable efforts, and then this is the part that I changed to clarify, through such methods as print publications, social media posts, written letters, phone calls, and/or emails, to regularly inform local clergy of all faiths, denominations, or sects of this policy, and invite them to offer the opening prayer. So, there was that, and that was paragraph two. The next change was number seven. In the event that a local clergy member cannot appear at any given commission meeting, a moment of silence will be observed. And I took out the part regarding a commissioner may offer the prayer, not must, but may. And I didn't want to take that out. It meant a lot to me, because I did not want to just revert straight to a moment of silence. But, you know, in the interest of getting this finished, and, you know, I figured that we would just go ahead and, you know, go with that. So, I move that we approve the final prayer policy as edited, and that we implement the policy starting at our next regular meeting on March 2nd, and that I work with the commission's staff to help create internal procedures for notifying and inviting local clergy, and creating and maintaining a list of said.
Second, is there any discussion?
Can I take a look at your final?
I'm sorry, I should have brought copies.
While you're looking, I'll roll for discussion. I still stand from my previous thoughts on this. I think it'd be cleaner and easier if we just did a moment of silence. I'm not against prayer, but I think for liability purposes with the county, it certainly is something much easier to do. A lot of other jurisdictions do the same, they just have a moment of silence. So, I will not be voting in favor of that motion, but I'm not against prayer, just for a moment of silence, just to make that clear.
I agree with the points that Commissioner Stolliver has made, and I do think we're putting a tremendous burden on our staff, additional duties, and it'll be, it'll be work for them to manage.
Well, I am happy to work with the commission in, you know, any way that I can to help with that. It would, you know, simply be a matter of posting, you know, in the paper and online, such as we do for special meetings and the like.
I think there's a difference that our staff, you know, as a group, we can manage our staff. As a commissioner, the staff may not say, I don't think that's a good idea to you, just because you are their, you are their employer. So, I think it creates a difficult position for the staff.
Yes, I can see where you're coming from, but that's something that I'm happy to help.
I don't think you understood my comment.
I'm sorry, what is your comment?
That if you're coming in to help the staff do something, they may feel that you are directing them to do something, because you are one of their employers.
Okay, is that a problem?
Yeah, because you can only act as a member of the commission when we're in five together.
Yes, ma'am. Regarding that, in policy 913, number three in that policy states that no individual Jefferson County Commissioner shall order or direct the performance of any task or duty by any county employee or volunteer unless specifically authorized by the County Commission of Jefferson County, which would be, you know, as we're voting. So, there's, there is my.
Well, I have a problem with authorizing one commissioner to sort of direct.
I was simply offering to help.
I understand that.
Not directing, but, yeah, that's all. I don't think that it's going to be that difficult to put that in the paper or place, you know, and, you know, add online, on social media, but I'm happy to help.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I guess I will just comment that I did have the opportunity to review everything Jennifer's put together, and I do appreciate the time she's put into it after our discussions with Nathan. The one true concern that I did have was in regards to commissioner-led prayer. And I am in favor in the final product that Jennifer's created. I do just want to say for the record, I know last week when I was walking in, I was called a religious bigot, and I wanted to make it clear that that is not the case. I know many of you have met or know my husband, Rakta. If you couldn't tell, he's Cambodian, and his family survived the killing fields in communist Cambodia. I always get emotional when I talk about it. But unfortunately, not all of his family made it out, and his uncle was a monk, and he was executed by the Khmer Rouge for his faith. So, the reason that I am very passionate about this, why I am in support of this, is because I think America is one of the very few places that was founded on religious freedom. And it is legal, it is completely within our right to publicly profess your faith. And I know Commissioner Tab had mentioned that you can do it in private, and I definitely agree, and I agree about moments of silence, but I think that it is a great opportunity to give our community that if we have a religious leader or a member of the faith, whatever that may be, if they would like to open a meeting and a prayer, I am in full support of that. So, I second it, and I do support it, which I would say.
Good deal, all right.
Point of vote, Mr. Stolliver. I don't know that you can vote on a policy that you don't have in front of you. You've heard renditions, but you don't have a finished product in front of you, and I don't believe you can vote on it. I would table it until the next month, till you have a hard copy in front of you.
I have a hard copy.
If you have time, you can look up Robert Jewels, but I believe you'll find it.
I'm going to call point of order. There's a motion on the floor. There's been discussion, so I, point of order would be to call the motion.
I agree with you. We have discussed this multiple times, went over this, so there's no sense in continuing to beat a dead horse, so to speak. So, I will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed.
No.
Motion carries three to two. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to new business, number 14, discussion and development of a plan of action, dissolution of the Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency and relations with EMS services. Mike, do you want to take the front seat on this, or any question, in case we have any questions? And then we'll do the, and then we'll jump into EMS. Yeah, it's, it'll, yeah, we'll go around.
So, I'll take the lead on this, since I put this on the agenda for many, a lot of confusion from the community. And I put this detail out, I think this would be a request, to have a plan shared with the public, and so the commission knows, particularly when we're having questions of the transition from ESA Board to Jefferson County Department. March 1st has been talked about a lot. It's my understanding that the county's consolidated delivery of EMS can happen under the direction of the board, and we haven't completed all tasks, and I could be wrong, so I'm looking for you all. But this is, this is unclear to the public where we are in the vote of converting this to a county department, the operation, the uncertainty, and we get a lot of questions. So, I put these items out here. I think this would go a long way for permitting the public to know where we are in this process. And if it is the desire of the commission to dissolve the board on March 1st, then that needs to be communicated, that needs to be understood to the board, of course. If it's a, where we cannot dissolve the board on March 1st, but not until everything's been transferred to the county government, Jefferson County Commission for operation, then I am asking for a suspension of dissolving that board on March 1st to allow EMS to continue to operate, and for that to be considered at a later date, when there can be a clean transition from the ESA Board to a county department.
And Nathan might have some, might want, you might want to add some clarification to that as well, too, while with Mike.
Sure. Well, it's still a work in progress, but it appears to me, as we said at the last meeting, that we can continue on this parallel track of working to shift everything over to the, to the county government as a department, and then we can continue to operate the board as long as that's necessary to effectuate any license transfers or anything like that that, that need to be, they need to have the board as, as an entity remaining. It, there's still some wrinkles to work out. It's exactly, because just, there's, there's, we're working on a plan to go forward. I hesitate to say, I've got a pretty good, pretty good concept of a plan at this moment, but I hate to put it out for everyone to review if we're going to, if it's not finalized. And so, I just think that leaves the confusion on everybody's. So, I think that we continue to do as, as we said at the last meeting, I think the last meeting, the meeting before that, they all ran together, but that we continue to operate on a parallel track, continue putting and moving the things over to the department that, that we can. And once we have the licenses finalized to the point that the board can be dissolved and, and afford to do that. There's also the finance aspect of this, billing aspect of this, which I don't know if our Finance Director wants to weigh in on that, or want to weigh in on it, but.
Sure.
That's about all I can say at this point. I think, Mike, I don't know if you have something to say, or if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I can give a little update. I mean, it's, it's really not one project. It's a couple of small projects put together, and we've called it the transition throughout. And really, there's, there's the transition from the volunteer-owned ambulances and their direct operation by volunteers, and their billing through volunteer companies, to the county purchasing units, owning them, still with our personnel that have been on it prior to, so no change there. And setting up the billing to be handled by the county, since we have the ounces. Operationally, that stuff is all set. The units are all been purchased, they've been, I'd say 95, we have one or two that are still in the shop that's had some unexpected issues, but they've been relettered, we're have the technology items that we are waiting on, but we are fully licensed in the name of the agency, the JCSA, to operate, to bill, to transport, in the name of the agency. Of course, the second part was the, what I call the conversion to a county department under the county government. At times, that becomes skewed, because there's also been discussion in the past of becoming a certified fire department. So, those words, department, get confused. But step two basically is, what our major conclusion really to our project is, transferring all our assets, remaining assets and our personnel into the county system, and going from having just a base director who works under the board, to working under the authority of the county administrator under your direction. So, the alignment of billing and stuff took a slightly different path, but like I said, it's in place to operate as the agency. So, we're working still to finish up and work, well, not really finish up, but we're working on the items that we need in the name of the county commission to operate and bill as the county commission. So, currently, we can operate as the agency, and we'll have to remain in that. And like Nathan was saying, it's basically a parallel track. We can continue to operate daily as the agency, transport in that name, bill in that name, patients will get their same service that they've been getting every day. And meanwhile, we're working on applying for those new certifications, new licenses, in the name of the county commission. And once all that is completed, then it basically is seamless. No one will see that we have just stopped operating and billing as the agency and started operating and billing as the county commission. You'll see no change on the outside whatsoever. So, that's kind of where we're at.
And I guess the biggest question, to make it really simple, for March 1st, will you be ready to go? for March 1st, will you be ready to go?
Yes. The Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency will be ready to go.
Yep, that's all, that's the biggest thing. And when somebody calls ambulance on March 4th, ambulance on March 1st, you will have an ambulance dispatch. Well, I'm on one, you'll have your guys in the ambulance dispatch to us.
That's correct.
So I, I want to just point of clarity that the JCSA board is not being dissolved March 1st and will continue to operate. And I know the board is actively recruiting and looking for a director replacement right now. I also know.
Which we, I love, I would like to work collaboratively on that at the high rank.
Well, so I will bring that up on Tuesday, the next meeting at the ESA board. There is a selection committee that's been put together. So I will suggest that they work with you on that. And then, so I guess I just want to point of clarity that the JCSA board will continue to operate and is not going away March 1st. I think that's where the confusion has come in. Rather, we should continue with meetings. And I think our last meeting was not clear. I also know that one of the ESA board members was appointed to the BZA. So there will need to be, to be compliant with the ordinance and bylaws until such time that that's dissolved. They will need, we will need to advertise for that and appoint someone to that board until such time that that board is dissolved.
And I agree with you. We haven't been clear on the position of the board in the midst of this transition. And I don't think any of us know the date when all these certifications or changes in licensure, licensure will occur. But, and, you know, I'm sorry, it's been that way. And we still don't have a draft date, but we're going to get there. And we'll have to first inform the board, you know, what's going on, so.
Since you're here, we will jump down to county, under county administrators' report and have an EMS update.
Mike just did a great job.
And we mainly talk about board stuff, but is there anything else you want to add under that?
I mean, there was a line where y'all talked about leases. We have two out of four signed and returned to you guys. So anticipating getting those wrapped up hopefully. So.
And then, did you want to talk with the medical director?
Yeah, I'm sure there's a little bit out there and the public might know. There's such a thing called a rapid response license. You can, through the West Virginia OEMS, which is the Office of Emergency Services, is what licenses ambulances and medical operation. What we have is a transport license allowed you to operate an ambulance, transport a patient to the hospital. And there's also what they call rapid response license. That allows you to operate any vehicle, go to the scene, it can be dispatched, go to the scene, render care, but it does not transport. Initially, we were planning on having that all ironed out through, not quite sure what happened, but Dr. Teresa changed her mind. And with that, there's things were not going to happen, but through some other discussions that we've had, she's back on board. All the companies that want to participate will be able to get, basically, it's a downgrade from their current license. If they're currently licensed as transport, they'll be able to downgrade to rapid response, certify certain pieces of equipment in their station to carry the required equipment. And they'll be able to respond and assist us on all calls. And sometimes they may get there before us, like in the middleway area. It's going to be a huge asset. So we're looking forward to, you know, maintaining those relationships.
Okay. Is anybody else have any further questions?
I just wanted to visit once again for the employees. Because I know there's a lot, they are not going to see any change at all, even March 1st. They'll continue getting the same page, oh, other than seven and a half percent raise. They will see that change, which is great news. But they, the same benefits that they have today, they, we're going to put them on with our benefit enrollment, which won't start until mid-April. But I think I mentioned last time, they're putting it out to market. And so it's going to be a new benefit package, probably for all of the employees. We're going to get the best, you know, that we possibly can for both, everybody. That open enrollment, that usually is around mid-April. And then those will take effect in July. So that's kind of, hopefully that helps with the timing of that to the extent that we know it. You know, hopefully we'll get the marketing, or the group, they put it out to market at the end of February. So that process is just getting started. And then if we, to address this list, because, yeah.
I just want something out to the public, you know, so they know where.
Yeah.
They have some reassurance that the ambulances are not going away and ceasing to operate on March 1st.
Absolutely.
And I believe in the transparency, letting them know where we're in the process from the agency.
And we're, Krista and the group is now with Chris, our new finance director, Krista Davis is a legit certified professional project manager, which is good news for us. And she's already tackling this list and adding, and adding to it and coming up with requirements, timelines, who's assigned to what. And we, so we, we share them.
Yeah. All of the tasks I'm going through and doing processor tasks in Microsoft Project. I mean, it's really coming together. I'm still just in the process of gathering all of the requirements and timelines for everything, each task. You know, some tasks, we don't know how long it'll take. Like Jane mentioned, some of the licensure thing, we're still. But every day, we're getting more and more information. And that's going into a draft of a project plan. And I think it's going to be something that we could present to the commission and the public at some point where we feel it's been, you know, all the requirements have been gathered and solidified and.
Is there anything in the form of, as I mentioned again, chart or anything like that that we can put out now to say, this is where we are? And this, I know I had conversation with some residents, and I, this is where we were, this is where we are. And a lot of them, we would like a visual, right? Could tell where we are in the process and offer some reassurance to the public.
Yeah, I have, like, from here, looking forward, because that's just because of when I started. But I could, you know, I would just need a little time to get more history in terms of what tasks we've already accomplished, like what was the overall plan? You know, we're here, and I'm looking from here out and not necessarily backwards. But yeah, it's totally doable. We already have it from here on out. It would just be a matter of bringing in historical stuff.
If it's something we could, we can get together in a nice visual that can go on maybe our webpage and the ESA's webpage or whatever. Something so people can just take a look and.
Yeah.
It's not blindly asking questions.
Yeah, yeah. We'd love to get your feedback, too, on like what, you would want that to look like. Because trust me, you don't want to, like, put anything out there that comes out of Microsoft Project. Like, it's very granular. So we maybe make it high level and easy for folks to really quickly look at and understand. Yeah, just a great idea.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I just want the public to understand that all these things that we're talking about, these additional relicenters and the project plan that she's working on now, it is stuff that, it's going to happen in the background. It's not going to affect our current operation. This is literally the changing of names on paper, but it requires new licenses made through the state and the federal government. But we currently have all those, and we will continue to operate as the agency. There'll be no loss of service while we're acquiring all these new named licenses. It's just happening in the background. And when the day comes that all those are completed, it changes from the ESA to the county commission. And no one will see that happen. It literally, it's just a background paperwork thing. So the operation will continue seamlessly.
That's most important.
Yeah.
Is Commissioner setting any further questions?
I have one quick question. There was talk of insurance costs for ESA employees going up. Change, while with the change.
We won't know that until we get the.
Bits out.
Bits out.
Their bid, I guess, been in order.
Yes, putting it out to market is the term that they use, so.
To shop plans.
Right. And hopefully we'll have different options that work for, you know, people need different things, right? So hopefully.
And this will be the first year that the ESA will be in our budget.
Right.
So they have been effectively rolled into our budget, and Mike and I still have to finalize everything. But I do have preliminary salary protections and all the taxes, all the insurance costs. So.
Good deal. All right. Anything else? All right, thank you, Mike. We're going to move on to county adminis, again, under county administration. That's like, everything in, you're.
Okay, so for the stipend or the staff, at the last meeting, we did, you all did approve a $3,000 stipend for Survivor Fitz and Jessica James. But I was informed by the county clerk that we cannot do that kind of payment, a stipend. So I'm here to ask, I still would like to recognize, I really feel they deserve increased compensation. So another, what we could do is a temporary pay increase to be, for the equals of 3,000 over the next three pay periods and just spread it out.
What's the reason we came to a stipend? We did it two years ago.
Well, and that was my understanding. And so we were trying to look up the rules online and stuff. We thought it was okay to do, but I don't, the county clerk.
The state, the state, the state auditor said you cannot do a one-time stipend. It's like a bonus.
How do, how do we do that in 2020 or 2021?
We paid it out of ARPA, a stipend to all county units. I think that's the difference.
Yeah. But I know I did see, there wasn't a, an employee in the past that they did this temporary upgrade pay, or however you want to term it, just for that, the next three pay periods.
Well, I think there was another level of responsibility, and they got paid more. Right, it's the terminology that we use. I'm not sure.
We have to call something else. We still got things. Do you need a motion for that or do?
I think I was asking for a motion to increase compensation for Jessica James, Assistant Deputy County Administrator, and Survivor Fitz, Administrative Assistant, in the amount of $3,000 total each over pay periods ending February 21st, 25th, March 11th, and March 25th.
So you're sticking a maximum of 3,000 and.
Right, so it's equal to the 3,000. But it's, it doesn't roll into their salary.
Well, we have to set salaries with the budget.
Hmm, yeah. Did we call the state auditor? I was going to say, could we maybe find out how we could do it?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to make a motion on this, but I find out we can't do that either. So I, can we, yeah, call the state auditor, maybe, and find out how we.
Describe the situation and say, you know, this is what we'd like to do.
Well, and my other concern is, you know, other departments do lose personnel, and they have to spread out responsibilities. And I just want to make sure we're complying and being fair to other.
Are you going to attack the original about moving them up into the, because technically, I think my position is vacant because I'm wearing the county administrator hat.
No, it's, I mean, your position is not, and Jessica's position is not vacant. That was mine.
I am fairly certain, though, and I don't know, Jennifer, that training me had gone to back in December. I know they specifically covered this about stipends, and they said how they wanted this bonus. But I think the solution was that you up them for the pay periods.
Okay.
But I'm fairly certain that that is what the auditor said.
So can we just confirm?
I think that we should double check that rather than just go from. I know my number is a little fuzzy from.
When I do this, one, I'm comfortable with a motion that once you find out the information, you act accordingly.
So we don't have to wait.
So we don't have to wait.
All right, that'd be great. Because we could get in with the next three pay periods.
Yes.
If that's fine.
Yeah. Anyway, I'll move a motion to have our county administrator, our acting county administrator, to, to look into this stipend versus the increased comp pay and act accordingly once she has proper information from the auditor's office.
Two.
Second.
In session. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Fundingly, hi, I want to hear what the auditor says.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is not appropriate.
No, I mean, call the motion, anybody, any nation's motion carries an answer. So once you find out, you can act.
Well, you can get, let us know. Because I want the employees to be telling me to.
It's like, want to make sure we use the right time.
Instead of wait two more weeks and wait another pay period. Okay? And personal action or especially.
Okay. And then I think we need executive session for this. Nathan or Karen or no? All right, good. Okay. No, not here. Okay, you're not meant to hear. We'll stay and hope it's, for this personnel action, just to advise you, the Director of Jefferson County Development Authority did resign this week. So we are going to look for, their board is going to be determining on Tuesday. They have a meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
To see what the plan might be to find an interim or a point. I don't know how it works with their board, so. But after they make that decision, then we'll be bringing it back to you guys on March 2nd.
Yes, the board, the board's going to meet on Tuesday.
Tuesday, right.
They will determine an interim. Krista Hoffman is also.
Has also resigned.
She's, she's went for the, she's doing Berkeley campus. Yep, so, yeah. So I'm sure we'll, we'll report on that next week.
Okay, great. And I can, I, can I still report?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to give an update on the county administrator job opening. So we have received 23 applicants. And if, I wanted to ask you, how do you all want to receive the resumes? Emails, paper, I don't prefer email.
Yeah, I think, I corrected it wrong, but I was scrolling through my notes. I was trying to send you what Sandy did last time. I believe when the, on the applications with the resumes came in, she scanned them and sent them to all the commissioners to look at.
Okay.
And then we will make a decision on how to proceed. But I think we narrowed it down to two selections per commissioner.
Right, yeah, that we can all put in.
That we all, and then we proceeded with interviews.
Yeah.
Is there anybody okay with acting accordingly in the same way? Will we pick a date for an interview?
Yeah.
Wait, we'll wait.
Well, but first we got to see, you know, look at our, if they have reviewed the applicants.
Yeah.
Your selection.
How long do I want to leave?
I think, well, we've got 23 so far through our next meeting.
Yeah.
The next March 2nd.
Okay.
Yeah, at least make it going.
Okay.
You know, sorting out who we want to put in a, in for an out, you know, for interviews.
Right.
Because that takes time and coordination.
Your time to get right, all of you together, right?
And so the number was two, we each picked two?
The last time, I believe each commissioner had the courtesy of picking two applicants to be considered for interviews.
And then we come to the next meeting with those two applicants in mind and discuss that.
I think we were saying.
They were going to say, we're going to leave the job posted.
Yes.
So through the next, till the next meeting?
Okay.
Oh, okay. And then all compiled at that.
She's going to accept resumes.
We'll pick two, and we'll have an interview.
Gotcha.
Last time it was a separate.
It was a separate.
Called everybody in and made time one by one.
Oh.
And then we interviewed one day. Say we scheduled it on Tuesday before Thursday. And we interviewed them on Tuesday. We went home, for lack of a better word, slept on it for two nights. And then came back and made it scheduled Thursday.
Okay.
That's how we did last time.
Thank you.
Is that right?
I think that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
See, anything else that needs to come for the admission? Just a quick reminder, we do have budget a year, right? On February 27th, Monday and Tuesday. That's, what time are we starting?
I think that all things settled right now, the thought processes on the 27th, that will be the department heads the morning from 9:00 to 12:00. And then, I didn't want to cram a bunch of presentations in all in one day. So I thought, you know, we would do a three-hour chunk on Monday, three-hour chunk on Tuesday of elected officials on Tuesday. And then possibly Wednesday or Tuesday afternoon, depending on what you guys want. We could do the component organization, like the library and all those guys. Have your own time.
Just want to remind commission and county staff that I believe it's the 23rd of February, Jackie, that the auditors have in budget preparation workshop in Martinsburg.
That's right.
So it would be beneficial. There's no charge to participate in it. That would be, I think, very helpful, particularly if anybody's got, you know, the new employees.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I just wanted to remind everybody.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So did you say the 27th and the 28th?
Yeah, and I'm not sure what you guys want to do with the 28th. Would you rather have it all in two days or three days?
Two.
Two, okay.
If you can keep everybody in their time, it will be very long.
If we don't, remind your schedule.
All right, so I would recommend blocking off the 27th and 28th. That'd be relatively long. Is there anything else that needs to come for the mission? As there are objections to adjourn, they don't.